Okay.
Brian, can you do the introduction?
I will. Does one of you mind calling the meeting to order?
I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. One.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. All participants are notified that this meeting is being recorded. In accordance with executive order issued by Governor Baker, the town of Irving is holding this meeting through an online and audio conferencing platform called GoToWebinar. Attendees using the GoToWebinar app online or on a mobile device should be able to see the meeting presentation and ask questions when directed. Your audio has been muted. Attendees participating by phone are muted and in a listen-only mode. On your screen, we are showing a few different avenues that individuals can use to either raise your hand or to submit a question for consideration in the question and answer box. We do ask for your patience when submitting a question. All questions will be communicated to the board chair. They will be answered at the discretion of the board chair, and we ask that you remember that everything submitted will become part of the permanent record.
Hey, Brian, just a question. I can't see if and when someone raises their hand. Am I correct?
I will actually. You've raised a fantastic question, and I'm going to change your power.
Okay.
You have more power. Did you just see some changes on your side? You may have a few more tools now. I've made you an organizer, and so a red hand will be raised when you see. Actually, I wish I could test it myself, but I can't raise a hand on my side.
Oh, okay. All right. So, oh, okay. I do see a red hand. Okay.
Of course, Officer Loyn will assist us with that. Thank you, sir.
All right. So when I see that red hand, that's an indication that someone wants to ask a question.
Correct. If you expand, you see all those gray tabs, and you see what it says, attendees.
Yeah.
If you click the arrow next to that, it will expand, and it will show you a grid. And when an attendee raises their hand, the hand symbol will show next to their name.
Okay. So do I click that on now, or do I only click that when there's a...
You can leave it expanded, so you can always refer to it. It's not gonna do anything if you keep it open, and whomever you call on, I will unmute for you.
Okay, all right. So you'll see this as I'm seeing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if I don't respond to it?
I will let you know.
You will? Okay, all right.
You got it, sir.
So just to let everyone know, in attendance, that the Chair, Jacob Smith, is detained and may be here at some point. We're not sure, but we're going to continue with the meeting, and if he arrives, he will then take the Chair. Okay, so we'll start with old business discussion regarding town response to COVID-19. If any.
Selectman Benbury, can I make a friendly request?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We have a few folks joining us tonight, and I believe that they're here to discuss the incident at French King Bridge, and I'm wondering if you'd be willing to move that item to the top of the agenda?
And is that on the agenda?
It's under new business. It's a number 10.
Good Samaritans at French King Bridge incident. Okay, let's go directly to that.
Thank you, sir. I will pull the letters up. Sergeant Holst obviously has joined you, and you all have discussed this topic at your previous meeting. There you are. Sergeant Holst has spoken with the three individuals who were present the night that Officer Jim Loyn, November 1st, rescued that individual from the bridge. And you all had discussed wanting to have an opportunity to discuss the actions of these individuals publicly. Sergeant Holst was kind enough to reach out to these individuals and confirm that they were comfortable being discussed publicly, and we've invited the individuals to join us this evening. I know one individual has joined us. I've heard from a second individual who's currently at work and is going to try to join us if their work schedule allows, but they were appreciative of the opportunity, so.
And who do we have with us tonight?
Well, obviously, you have Officer Loyn with us again, but Laura Duffy has joined us.
Okay.
Would you like me to unmute, folks?
Yes, please.
Oh, and a second individual who we were hoping to join us, Kyle Forrest, has also joined us.
Okay. Kyle Forrest. And so we have one other person who's not here, and that's Jeremy Gonzalez.
Jeremiah was unable to join us at this time.
Okay, all right. And Jim Loyn is here as well.
Officer Loyn is with us as well.
Okay.
I have unmuted everybody on my side, and you are now in control of the ability to mute on your side.
I hope everyone will bear with me tonight, because this is the first time that I've had to... So unmuting is just clicking on the X?
You can see a green microphone next to everybody's name, and when it's green, they have control of their microphone. So when you're looking at that attendee grid, green microphones mean that our guests can now speak with us.
Okay. To start, I would... I'd appreciate it if Sergeant Holst, Acting Chief of Police, would kind of run over the incident itself as it occurred, and then we'll go into reading the letters from Sergeant Holst into the record, and then we'll open it for any comment or discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Benbury, Mr. Sanders, and Mr. Smith. As I can see, also, it looks like Officer Loyn, his wife Kelly, and Kyle, and Laura are both with us. First of all, thank you all for attending. And so on November 1st, the Irving Police Department had to respond to a report of a subject at the French King Bridge that was on the other side of the railing and appeared that he was getting ready to jump. Officer Loyn was working at the time of the call, and he was in close proximity to the station and responded in a timely manner. And as he arrived on scene, the subject was still on the other side of the railing with his back to the travel lane, and he was holding on to the railing with both hands. I could see that there was a few people on the video camera as Officer Loyn approached, and it appeared that the individuals were talking with the subject on the other side of the railing. Officer Loyn obviously approached, and the subject turned around to, I don't know, engage in conversation with everybody. And that was a very brief moment. The subject then spun back around, and it appeared that he was in position again to jump. And it was within seconds that Officer Loyn moved in, and the bystanders, the Good Samaritans also came in, and then the camera went blank, and I would assume that that's because Officer Loyn was holding on to the individual, and all you could see was up close. But you hear a struggle, you hear some muffled, and then, next thing you know, the subject is on the other side of the railing, and Officer Loyn is in the process of handcuffing him to the railing to keep him from, you know, attempting to get back on the other side of the railing. Then, you know, the medical personnel were requested, and the bystanders, the Good Samaritans, stayed on scene. They continued to reassure the individual, and they did an amazing job in helping Officer Loyn. I got a phone call from dispatch shortly after the incident occurred advising me of what had happened, and I reached out to Officer Loyn within probably 10 minutes, and Officer Loyn's comments to me was, I asked him what he needed, and all he could do was thank the Good Samaritans and wasn't concerned about himself or anything. He just really wanted to recognize the Good Samaritans, and so that's where we are today, Mr. Benbury, with the letter that went out to Officer Loyn a few weeks ago, and then follow-up letters to the Good Samaritans.
Thank you, Acting Chief Sergeant Holst. The Board would like to express our appreciation to Kyle Forrest of Westminster, Massachusetts, Laura Duffy from Irving, Massachusetts, and Jeremy Gonzalez from Greenfield, Massachusetts. I can't express enough how important it is to have residents and individuals of the community to be able to come forward and help our offices in a time of need and to help the public in a time of need. We live in a time that, more often than not, people aren't doing those things. We aren't talking to each other. We're not helping each other. We're neighbors. We're friends. We're all in this together. We have a pandemic going on at the same time, and these people came forward and risked their lives to try to help someone else, try to help an officer in need of help and in need of assistance. And I can't express how grateful I am as a member of this community and the governing body of this community, how important it is and how genuinely the response to help people in a time of need is. Having said that, I'd like to read into the record. This letter was... We have three letters. I'm only going to read one because they're all the same, but the letter was issued by the Irving Police Department by Sergeant Robert L. Holst, Acting Chief of Police. And the letter is... There's a letter to Kyle Forrest, Westminster, Massachusetts, a letter to Jeremy Gonzalez, Greenfield, Massachusetts, and Laura Duffy, Irving, Massachusetts. "On behalf of the Irving Police Department and the Town of Irving, I would like to thank you for your willingness to assist a citizen in crisis and a member of this department with a very difficult incident on November 1st, 2020, at the French King Bridge. The support you provided to the individual prior to the arrival of the police may have been just enough to make him hesitate and allow the needed time for the arrival of the officer on scene. Once the officer arrived, you continued to provide needed assistance until the situation was resolved. Your willingness, support, and caring heart for others assisted in the efforts of saving a life that day and provided support for the officer to know he wasn't alone on the call. I cannot thank you enough and appreciate all that..." "...respect." Sergeant Robert L. Holst, Acting Chief, Irving Police Department. With that, I saw in the newspaper that there was an article, also was online the day before, and there was an article in today's Greenfield Recorder that talked about the incident itself and how the officers who respond from Gil and from Irving and who have repeatedly responded for decades now. This has been an ongoing problem for the community as a whole. It's a problem that we continue to work on. It's a problem that has a financial impact to the communities that respond. It also has a physical and mental impact on the officers who respond from across the community, fire, police, search and rescue, local medical facilities, where individuals, if they are lucky enough to be pulled back over from the brink of losing their lives, are taken to facilities to be assisted and physically helped through whatever the depression might be or for whatever reasons they might have decided that this was the way to go. Sadly, the bridge will continue to be a problem for our community and the surrounding communities, and it is something that the Irving Police Department and all of our public safety departments are working on with the state, Mass DOT, and the Governor's Office. We will continue to work on it, and we will continue to try to bring a a safety barrier to the bridge that will end, at least for our community and for the individuals who may have a second chance at not taking their lives. And with that, if the Board would like to ask any questions or of the Good Samaritans who acted in good faith on November 1st, 2020, feel free to to add any comments.
I would like to thank Kelly, Kyle, and Laura for helping Officer Loyn. As Phil has stated, it's good to know that there are people out there who still care about another individual, especially in their time of need, when they're really down. And I personally really appreciate it. I think it's a great thing that you were there to assist Officer Loyn, and it's just good to see that type of support. Thank you.
Acting Chief?
Yeah, Mr. Benbury, thank you again for the floor. As I listened to you read the letter, I kind of feel bad. It just doesn't do justice hearing it out loud from somebody else. You know, Kyle, we don't know Kyle. We know Laura because she's in our community. But I don't think that people realize the severity of... Had that subject decided to fall forward, you know, potentially could have taken, you know, Officer Loyn, Kyle, Laura, and Jeremiah with them. And I apologize if the letter doesn't do justice to you, Kyle, and to Laura. You're both here. But I can't thank you both enough. And then the support, you know, as an officer, it's eerie enough going on calls by yourself or responding alone, but just the comfort that I'm sure Officer Loyn felt seeing other people there. It's amazing. So thank you both, and thank you to Jeremiah if he hears this at a later date.
Thank you, Acting Chief Sergeant Holst, and we appreciate your comments, and we appreciate all that the Police Department does for our community and for the sacrifice that they make for our community and to the people who pass through our community on a daily basis. Our officers go out in good faith, and they patrol our community, and they, on occasions like this, risk their lives to protect the community. And they will continue to do so. On our last meeting, we spoke to Officer Jim Loyn, who I understand is here. I can't see him on the monitor, but if, Jim, if you'd like to say something or make any comments, feel free to do so. We appreciate all that you have done for this community.
Can you hear me?
You've come forward and risked your life, and again, we are here for you. And any way that we can assist you in the future, please let us know.
Can you hear me?
I can. Yes.
Okay. I just... I appreciate all the kind words, and I want to sincerely thank Acting Chief Holst and the Board and Town Manager Smith for honoring my request to have these folks recognized. I just want to sincerely thank you because that situation wouldn't have resolved itself as successfully as it did if it wasn't for you folks being there. And I can't thank you enough. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thanks, Jim.
We have two Samaritans here, and if you would like to say, make any comment, or if you have anything to say, we would be happy to allow that to happen for you. So if you're willing to say something, you can. If not, we appreciate your service to the community. We appreciate all that you did on November 1st. And be safe. And we will have these letters mailed to you directly and a letter certification from the Board of Selectment as well. Hearing no comments, I'm going to move to...
Selectman Benbury?
Yes.
Laura has just raised her hand. She would like to speak.
Oh, okay. All right. Laura Duffy?
Thank you, Chair Benbury, and Acting Chief Sergeant Holst, and Mr. Sanders, Mr. Smith. And one, I want to just say a big thank you to Kyle and unfortunately Jeremiah, who can't be on with us today. You know, seeing this person on the bridge, my whole goal was trying to get to him and talk to him. And when I saw the two of them walking up from either side, I was relieved to have some muscle there if I needed it because I would not have been able to hold this gentleman on my own, and I didn't get to say anything to them that day. So a true heartfelt thank you for Kyle and Jeremiah, and of course, Officer Loyn, who came in and made sure that the gentleman was safe and that everybody was in good hands that day.
We thank you directly. The Board thanks you, and I personally thank you for your sacrifice and for your assistance on that day. And it is greatly appreciated, and it's nice to know that in a small community like Irving, that there are folks out there that when the need arises, they step up, and they come forward. And they're willing to think of others and risk their own personal safety to do that. And I appreciate that, and the community appreciates that. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
It doesn't appear so, sir.
Okay, well, hearing none. We're going to continue with our agenda for this evening. And again, thank you to all who attended. Sergeant Holst, while you're here, Acting Chief of Police, do we have anything else on the agenda that you're interested in tonight?
Thank you.
Let's see. Let's take care of...
Selectman Benbury, if you'd like, I can give you the update just on the search process?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we issued the agenda last week that you approved for the Chief of Police search. So that has been sent out to the potential consultants, and I changed the deadline just by a few days, so they will be received by this Friday. I've already received one response. So they'll still be in time for your review next Monday. And we are actively accepting applications for the patrol officer position, so both searches are underway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Rob.
Have a good evening and be safe.
You too. Also, thank you, Town Administrator Smith, for pulling it together.
Good night, sir.
Okay, continuing with the agenda. Library construction project update and review of change order request.
So in your packets, I provided a memorandum to just give you a quick update on what we were able to accomplish last week regarding the library construction project. So as we had indicated, you had a team meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th. That did occur. So we had representatives, obviously, from the town, your... When there's project manager, as well as Marroy, your general contractor, and Johnson and Roberts, who are your architects. We've reviewed all of the outstanding items that had originally been listed on your punch list. And obviously, Library Director Natani has identified other issues that have arisen within the facility now that she's had a few months. Ellis has identified other issues that have arisen within the facility now that she's had a few months to, to operate the facility with her staff. And so those items were added to the list. We also reviewed the, the additional punch list that was created by the commissioning agent. That is a third party that the project retained to go over the specifications and to make sure that everything is as it should be. So all of that work is being addressed. In fact, some of that work was completed on Friday of last week. That would have been November 20th. Some additional work may take a few additional weeks to, to complete. So that's well underway. We also were able to work with our solar array installers. They had some additional work to do to meet the specifications that EverSource is requiring so that a meter will be set and we can finally begin powering some of the library's electric, electricity needs from the, the solar array. So I am just, I'm just waiting on confirmation from EverSource that they're able to return hopefully this week. If not next week to set that meter. And we're also working with Galaxy Integrated to finalize the few remaining items that have to do with access control and security library.
Pete, do you have anything you want to add or?
No.
Okay.
I will make sure that I keep you all up to date as, as that work progresses.
Thank you, Brian.
Of course.
Next on the list is River Water and Stratton Street Project Update and Change Orders.
We have finally heard back from our contractor. The, the team has scheduled a site visit for 9:00 AM this upcoming Wednesday. So we, we will be meeting down at River Street. We will be working with all parties to, to review their proposal. So my hope is that I'm able to present to you for next Monday, a proposal for your consideration to see if you're, you're willing to accept it. But that work has finally been scheduled at least to, to return to the site and, and work as a team to, to identify deficiencies and what the remedy would be.
Pete, if, if at any point you want to jump in, if you have something to add.
Yep, I will.
Okay.
Are there any questions or, or concerns I could address on that topic?
I have no, no questions. I mean, we'll probably have a lot of questions once we have a clearer picture on what's, what, what's happening and how are we going to correct the deficiencies that exist? So.
Absolutely.
Okay, we covered a discussion regarding Chief of Police Position Search. Unless you have something else to add, Brian, that we all said.
Not at this time.
All right. Next, review of streetlight installation project procurement.
You all are so patient with me. I've been digging out of our procurement backlog at the end of last weekend today. This, this is the one where we have a tie at your, your two lowest bidders. We have a coin flip finally scheduled for tomorrow at 2:00 PM with the two parties. And so I should be able to send you a update after that coin flip about where we stand on that procurement and hopefully you can take an official vote next Monday.
Okay, I am comfortable with that and I hope, who's the, who, who else is going to attend that to verify the, the flip?
I have invited both Glenn McQuarrie and Mariah Kurtz. I know Glenn is available and I'm just waiting to see if Mariah is also available so that the town has witnesses for the flip.
We're supposed to be installing snowflakes, but I suppose we can make time.
That was the exciting part. The snowflakes are in.
Okay. And so this is, this is going to be done by remote as well?
Correct. Yes. Both parties have been sent a, a meeting invitation with a URL links that they can participate in as well.
Okay. Is this, does the public have access to this if they, if they wish to, to view it?
That's a really good question. I could, I could send that out. I have not. But if you would like me to post it on the town website, I could do that if you'd like.
Please do.
You have it, sir.
Okay. Any other further questions? No. Okay. Discussion, discussion of water line upgrade request near water tower.
So this was the, you carried this topic from last week. Correct. So I, if I recall correctly, you discussed the, the different options. You discussed that the preference would be for a ductile iron pipe, if you were to do an upgrade up there as opposed to a plastic. And you discussed wanting to do the installation off of the existing ductile iron line that is up there as opposed to the 12-inch plastic main. You all also discussed potential support for this request as long as the cost for the installation was borne by the requesters. So that I knew that was one item that's, that's outstanding for us to, to finalize. The last piece that Pete and I were looking into is the issue of ownership of this line. The town has a practice or a policy that the town owns the main as well as the line running to the curb stop. And then the property owner earns, owns the line from the curb stop to their, to their facility or to their home. We have found on the maps that this line is present on maps dated prior to the town owning the system. So you'll recall that the water district was dissolved in the early 1990s and the town took ownership of the water infrastructure. So we're not finding a specific project unless Pete found something today related to this, this work. But we are finding indications that this line existed prior to the town taking ownership of the water system. Is that correct, Pete?
Yes. And currently I, I just received an email today around four o'clock. My contact in DP who I wanted to run everything by to make sure there wouldn't be any issues with that department. He is going to get ahold of me tomorrow morning. He, he was tied up, busy. So I'm, I'm going to run everything by him just to kind of make sure it is doable. I'm pretty sure it will be. It's just a matter of what specifications they want to put on it.
Okay.
So should we carry that topic for you all again to next week?
Yes. Obviously, this is an ongoing topic and we can carry this over until, until next Monday and and address those issues as, as they arise during the week.
Okay.
Okay.
Get your agenda back up.
Discussion regarding POTW number two sludge dry a project. Do we have any new news regarding that issue?
The only news that I have at this point is just to let you know that I have spoken with your, your legal team about the status that we, we learned about the, the project last Monday and the position that Irving Industries has on the forms of funding that we were trying to assist with the, the application for or pursuit of. So your, your legal team is up to, to date on where we are. They were requesting a meeting with the legal team from Irving Industries for the beginning of this week. Their, their goal was today. If not today, hopefully tomorrow. So I am awaiting the, the outcome of that conversation and that would be specifically to one, ensure that we, we both, both parties are, are very much on the same page about where this project stands and what the goal is and, and the different details that have sort of evolved over the last few months. And then to ensure that the draft agreement that they had been working on, the two parties for your review and the review of, of Morrishausen, the president of Irving Industries for your, your negotiation accurately reflects that new plan. The, the draft had been done about a month, maybe a month and a half ago. And like I said, the, the project has changed slightly in terms of the understanding and the composition and if town or, or public funding would be involved. So, so that work is supposed to be happening today or tomorrow. And I should have an update on where we stand for next Monday.
Okay. So Brian, we had a, we, we had one grant that was put forward. And we, I believe Mariah and yourself were going to look at whether we could change that or add to that. Any information about that?
I believe you're referring to the, the state revolving loan fund.
Yes.
And you are correct. We did apply. That was for the, the total cost of the estimated debt service that we would need for the project. That was the, the borrowing authority that we went to town meeting for in October. So I have, today I sent a correspondence back to Mr. Housen just to ask one more time to confirm that, that there's no longer an interest in, in using public funds for this project. Assuming I get that confirmation, I will reach out to the SRF to see if it's too late for us to change the, the scope and the intent of our application. I did run that, that possibility past our legal team. And they seem to think that there was a chance that they may be open to allowing us to, to alter the plan. But I just don't want to close the door to the larger borrowing authority if that, if the project evolves again. So I just wanted to get that confirmation for you all one more time. I'm ready.
Okay. Fair enough. Pete, anything?
No, that's the only thing we can do, really.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, Brian, the only thing that I have for minutes is on the Monday, November 16th minutes is, is
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I make a motion. We accept the November 16, 2020 minutes as written.
A second.
Any? Any amendments, any questions to it, any changes? I have none as well.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, I, I know, Brian, that you're, you're extremely busy, but do we have an idea when we're going to get to April?
Yes.
And
Yes. They, all four are started. They just haven't been finished. I was discussing that strategy with Chairman Smith today. And our thought is to begin working on the April ones and working forward and maybe foregoing, say, the meeting minutes of tonight to get those older ones cleared off. Just the, to keep everybody in mind, while I need to get these off the plate, we're in the middle of the capital budget process, which started a few weeks ago and that had to be presented last week. And all operating budgets for FY22 are due this week. And I'll be assembling that all weekend. Because your review of that begins in a week and a half. So I'm trying to fit meeting minutes in between budget planning. But yes, I'm going to work on the oldest ones and try to get those, those off the list for you all.
Okay. Future, would it, would it help to, or would it help you to have someone transcribe the minutes as, as they come in, someone else who may attend the meeting as well?
It may be useful to, to have that conversation. I know that we, you had done that many years ago and and it may make sense to revisit that. This obviously, this was the first year that we fell this far behind. Usually you've always approved the meeting minutes from the last meeting, the very next meeting. At the most, we carried maybe two weeks. So this is, this is highly unusual. This, this year got out of control for us. So yeah, we, we could revisit that. The one concern that I had, we had hoped that this software that we're using for the meeting platform, which does transcribe, we, we had hoped that that would be useful. It is not useful. It provides a, it provides a detailed record, but it, it, it tries to guess what, what is being said. So sometimes it's very inaccurate. And then it does not identify who said what. So if, if the transcription was handed to somebody who wasn't present at the meeting, they would have no way of knowing that you had said something or I had said something. So unfortunately, this, this as a tool is not useful.
Okay. All right, let's, let's keep it an open discussion, future discussion and be a need to to revisit this discussion. I'm sure the, the Board would be more than happy to, to look at, at reviewing it and looking at a different way to move forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Next on the new business is review of townwide project list.
I believe you have Mariah with you to review this and I will get it on the screen.
Okay, so this is probably the most overwhelming thing that I've done so far. Just looking at everything that we're supposed to do in the next year or a couple of years. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at it. I updated it a little bit since I submitted it for the last meeting. And this definitely isn't all of our projects, but I couldn't think of anymore. So if as you're looking at this, you can think of other things, please let me know and I will add them. So you'll see at the top is a breakdown of what all the quarters are. There is the calendar year and the fiscal year broken out by quarter. Projects that are in the kind of green color are grant funded product, projects, and those tend to be things that are tied to a deadline. So like we have to spend the money by the end of the fiscal year or something like that. And then the, the dark blue are just other projects that we have going on. And then you'll see that there's a status. So some things are just anticipated projects that don't necessarily have a timeline yet. Some things are things that we know need to happen and just need to be started. Some things are already in progress. I tried to, some of the projects were kind of grouped under one grant or one type of project. So I put those in kind of categories. And then the subtask is that actual project. And then the department that it might fall under, a lot of these projects fall under multiple departments. You know, and Brian and myself are often involved in them, but I tried to kind of assign it to a main department. A lot of these are still blank when you actually get to the grid because I don't know when they're supposed to happen. The rec commission stuff, I actually just had a meeting with Bretta right before this meeting to look at, she used the same grid and filled it in for all of the rec commission projects. So I can add a little bit more detail to those. But there's a lot on here and a lot of it happens. Brian, can you scroll up a little bit? I think there's some more. Some more.
Is the top frozen? Oh yeah, you're absolutely right. There was more.
Yeah, it keeps going forever.
Can you enlarge this a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Yep, that's good.
Just tell me when you want me to scroll and in what direction.
You can scroll down. So all all the projects that say BOS decided that that's to indicate that. What is it to indicate?
It's some combination of Brian and I mostly. It's usually grants that are awarded to the Board of Selectmen's Office that are kind of interdepartmental.
Okay, okay.
And then the second tab of this is. It it's not well fleshed out yet, but I'm starting to track all of the grants that we've gotten. And I'm gonna try to make some graphs and charts showing all of the grants that we've gotten from all of the departments, so. I'll be reaching out to, I know there's several, you know, department heads who have gotten grants this year. And hopefully that can be an ongoing thing each year. And Brian and I talked about including that in the annual report so that people can see. You know, here's how much we've spent, but here's how much we brought in through grants.
Yeah, I was, that's a good point. I I was going to. When I was looking at at the chat earlier today. One of the questions I have and that us continuing to be transparent and. And for the public to understand exactly that we're not just spending money. But we're spending mu, we're, we are spending money, but we're spending money in a good way. That that we're getting grants for, to assist us in in not having to spend. Town money readily, so. That's a good thing. And but we need to communicate that as as well to to the public, so. I I think putting that in. The budget book to to, for people to to see. Helps in the conversation when we talk about. When we actually are at the annual town meeting talking about voting on the budget, so.
Yeah, and Brian, can you go back to the other tab quick? Please. I don't know the best way to go about this. There's a lot that happens at the, basically this coming spring, the end of fiscal year twenty one. Yeah, if you could, maybe like one twenty five or one fifty, yeah. It does for me. Does that work for you? Okay, so yeah, so if you look at this coming spring, we have a lot going on.
This area right here, right?
Yeah, and so I guess. There's a lot of things that still aren't scheduled and there's gonna be a lot of smaller things that aren't going to be on a project list like this that will happen. I know that there's some some personnel changes. So we're gonna be doing some hiring. That takes a lot of Brian's time. We have a lot of RFPs which are on here and those take a lot of time. I don't have, you can see, so the Pleasant Street School, I don't have on here. And if we have to offload the library as well, that's not on here. If we're gonna be doing any renovations to use those buildings, those aren't on here. So I guess, I I think everyone has expressed concern about this so far. And I know that, you know, Brian and I have talked about this as well, but. We need to be sustainable in how we're using our time and not burn ourselves out and not. Take on so many projects that some of them don't. Have the end result that we would want. You know, I don't want our projects to suffer because we've taken on too much. So I guess. I don't have a more specific question than that, but if, maybe if you all could look this over, over the next week. And just see if there are things that. Maybe we move or maybe like, I guess prioritizing is important. For things that don't have dates, what dates we think those should be assigned. Yeah.
Brian, do you have anything to add to that?
I will echo everything she just said. The the downside, and Chairman Smith and I have had this conversation a few times as well, the downside to. Being ambitious and trying to respond to all of the great ideas that everybody in town has, whether they were citizen requests. Or if they were departmental requests for capital projects or. Great opportunities is that you end up with, end up with a lot of projects. And to to Mariah's point, there's a lot that your office has to be involved in. Because they may, they may include grant funding, they may include. Some procurements that require a higher level of involvement on our behalf to make sure we comply with the laws. And so every time we work on one of these projects, that bandwidth gets gets stretched. And so I do think that there's a valid concern that we have a lot already on the docket. It doesn't mean that all of these other projects are not important. But I I do think that we do need to be realistic about how much more we can take on right now until we get some of these projects complete for you all. Even though we're excited about the other ones and I I just, while while we need to do that, I think it's important work. I I just wanna make sure that anybody whose project gets deferred to another fiscal year or gets pushed out doesn't. Take away the message that their project wasn't important. The whole point of putting the schedule together was to make sure that no project falls off the the list and that we don't lose track of it. But I I do think we have to be honest about how much we can take on, because I definitely think we're at our our limit.
So all the 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 grants that that we that we have, they they have a a time date. And which they're required to be fulfilled.
Correct.
So it it would. How how do you see that? I I I can't see it that from looking at it.
So the the green squares are the grant funded projects and. I tried to put those where they would make sense. The the next tab over has their actual end dates, but like, so if you look at. The Complete Streets Program for Central and Park Streets and Pratt and Gunn Streets. Those have to happen during months where we can be, you know, paving, pouring concrete, digging things up, etc. So that's quarter four FY twenty one and quarter one FY twenty two. And I believe that that money has to be spent by June of. What, let's see, June thirty FY twenty two?
Correct.
Yeah, so basically that gives us one construction season to do those projects. So that's why those are put there. The the blue ones, some of those are more urgent than others. Like I know I just added looking for a new cemetery location. We're required by law to do that when we get under a certain amount of capacity at our current one. So that's not grant funded, it is a little bit. It's a little bit more required than some of the other ones, which are a little bit more elective. So even the blue ones kind of vary in terms of how strict they are. You know, some of them, we've already started. Yeah, and some of these will correspond with capital project requests too. So. As the budgeting process goes along, we may see other things add or drop or move around on here. I don't expect that this will be a one and done chart. I think that this will be a living document that we're constantly updating.
Now that you said capital, I I've sent a lot of documents to the capital committee that resumed meetings last week. I'm feeling like this document is probably another document that they should be aware of. Because they see the funding requests and and so they see that side of it, but they don't see where it ends up in the in the queue. This may be a great visual to give them.
So Mariah, can, looking at this, can you tell us what we received in in grants to date? Fund wise, money wise?
I don't have that yet. I just started the grant process, working on that a couple of days ago of trying to tally that up. I know I have a few emails from Brian from. Other departments and what they've received. I know, you know, FIRE has received a few grants. I know that the library has, I think the senior center has. I know our office has, so. I think our office has probably had almost a million come in, but I don't know about others.
Okay. So we clearly need to get a handle on this. From all angles and and you're correct, this is a living document, it's gonna change daily, monthly, weekly. Yearly. And we have to prioritize which ones. Get built out first as opposed to which ones can can. Can wait and how much time we have and. Who's gonna do the work and do they actually have the time to do the work and there's a lot of things happening here. So we have to. Figure this out.
Selectman Member, can I ask, does this, does this visual help? I know when you all asked for this a few weeks ago, I'm not sure what you had in mind. I know that Mariah is really sort of wrestled with how to present this information to you all. And this this seemed to really make sense. Does this help?
It does help. So I I I think what we need to do with this first is. Is is be able to see what needs to happen first or next. In the line of of. Starting the project and ending the project. And. I would like to see, along with that, like to see a separate sheet for, and this is, but but this is for annual. Town meeting and and and. Special town meetings and for the finance community where we are in in how much, how much grant money we are receiving and what it's for. And a kind of breakdown in that way so people have a better understanding of of what's there and what isn't there. And and how much is there and and how do we use that as in a capital planning way to. To lessen how much money we we. We spend. Or that we agree to spend. I mean. There's a lot of stuff, there's so much stuff happening here, it's time to get a handle on it, obviously.
Selectman Member, last year, the three of you worked on a section of the budget that was new. It was a revenue section. That we had not included in past years. And I'm wondering as we further develop and and start to build out that FY twenty two budget. If there would be an appropriate place in that revenue section to present some grant. Information. I I don't know what the exact format looks like, but I'm just trying to think of to to your point about making sure that the voters have that information at town meeting. And if they have it in the annual report, the annual report's a great recap, but the the budget talks about what the plan is for next year. And so a little history helps, but maybe we could talk about expected grant opportunities. So that the residents can understand our our overall vision. But that's just a rough idea until until we maybe worked on a draft and and really dive into the budget process. I'm not sure exactly what it looks like yet.
Right. Yeah, I, yeah, I I think that that would be helpful. It would be helpful to know as well. I think that. Generally, when you get a grant, there's, there's, there's a full grant and then there's a partial grant and then there's. A grant that we have to match or or or. Or is the project that we're taking on, do we need to add more funds to it and the grant is just a supplement to to begin some work? I mean, we. We have to clearly understand all of those aspects of that in order to keep moving forward in a responsible way, so. All all those things are important and it and it looks like Mariah, you're doing it all yourself, huh?
Thank you.
We we are truly blessed and glad that you are here.
Thank you.
And without you and and the work that. Brian does as well, that you both do together. Is is certainly impacting positively on on the community, I think. And evidenced by the 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 grants that we've received and. And will continue to see, receive if you continue the work the way you have. I I'm thrilled. It's just how do we manage it all? We get all this good wealth and now we have to manage it in a in a reasonable way, so. It will force us to manage it or we'll be in lots of trouble. I'm not really worried. I I think it is a living document and it should stay on, clearly stay on the agenda. Weekly and as you have. You and Brian have information that that we need to know or there's a way to. For the, the chair is talking to Brian, Brian and the chair are talking to each other, so. As you pull things out, it will come before everyone who needs to, oh. What did I do?
You didn't do anything.
Alright, they will come before all of us and and we'll and we'll figure it out, so.
Selectman Member, you just did a a great setup for the next agenda topic. That is the recent grant that we just got Thursday. If you want me to switch back to that, you know, I thought you did that intentionally.
No, I didn't.
It was like you were just presenting it on a platter.
Oh, okay. And that is the.
So on Thursday, we were awarded the five hundred thousand dollar Mass Works Grant. Which we had applied for a lot more money than that to do a whole access road, if you remember that discussion. And they had reached back out and Jake and I had a call. With them basically revising our. Our original ask to five hundred thousand dollars. And it was a different category, so they. Awarded us this money to basically put in a pump station and retrofit the sewer lines to connect with the Prospect Street Sewer Main. And this will. Correctly size the sewer infrastructure for new development at the IP mill.
So. It's, it's fantastic news and. I think Mariah and I were having this conversation last week that some things I think happened for a reason. I don't know what guides that in the in the ether, but. This is, this is a large project in and of itself. And doing this right, back to an earlier point, is is important. We will not be able to redevelop that site. If we can't get the infrastructure appropriately sized. And so this makes that property much more valuable if we can get this installed. So with that, my. We haven't gotten the contract documents, though I do expect them this week or next week, so they should be here soon. And obviously, we will, we will need to go down that road, but we need an engineer on this project. My assumption is that you typically work with tie and bond on all of your water and wastewater projects. And I'm assuming that you would want to do that again. And so my request to you all would be, can we proactively request a proposal from tie and bond? Or the engineering work that it will take to create bid documents to do this work and oversee the construction of this work?
Okay, so that's the the next step that has to be taken.
Agreed, yeah.
And then we, the the third step would be to to put it out to bid?
Correct, correct. This is gonna be a large job. We would have to put it out to bid.
Okay. And what, what is the timeframe for, for this grant?
We don't have one yet. I'm assuming it's 18 months, something like that. But we, because we don't have the contract paperwork yet, we don't have an exact timeline.
Okay. So this is a, another one of those things that, that will stay on the agenda until next Monday and, and we will continue to update it as it, and move forward as, as required. Do we have an idea, once this work is done, where, where we're going to be in the grand scheme of this, this property, this building and, and, and kind of what's next?
So this will be, this project will be happening, you know, say, say this summer into next spring. And we would have to do this work whether someone bought the property tomorrow or not. Even if we auctioned it off, this work would have to be done for there to be any kind of new development there. And I think that's what Brian was referring to when he said that things work out the way they do for a reason, because if we, if we had gotten the money for the access road, that would have been wonderful. It would have been another giant project to take on. But somebody could potentially, when we put out our RFP this winter, which our current plan is sometime in January, to put out a request. If someone were to put in a proposal and we liked it and it met all of our criteria, and we started making moves on that process, that could happen. And this infrastructure would already be in place. And if not, then we can keep applying for grants to put in an access road if we'd like. So this kind of, this work fits in no matter what direction we go with IP. I know, I think I had mentioned when we put in this application, I had had a few conversations with developers or potential developers who had some hesitation about putting in the access road right along the river, because they felt like if they developed the property, they really wanted close access to the riverfront, because they felt like that really was what the property had the most value in. So I think I'm feeling a little, a little bit hesitant moving forward with that access road without really thinking about whether there's another location on that property that could be placed where it wouldn't cut off access to the river as much. But I think that this buys us the time to think about that, because we don't have to put that road in right now. We can focus on this infrastructure.
Right.
Yep. The only other outstanding piece that the grant hasn't even applied for, you all authorized Mariah to apply, was it three weeks ago now, for the state writing this grant?
I think so.
So we are, we are awaiting a decision on that grant application, and that would provide for demolition funding of some of the most degraded sections of the building, which again, would have to happen regardless. So, so that's the, the other grant, well, that's one, that's the major grant that we have out. The second grant that we have out, that we applied for was real estate assistance. So to assist us with that RFP, maybe to do some surveying of the property, to prepare those documents, we did apply for that as well. So those are the other things that we need to accomplish on the property that we've put out grant applications for.
The, the surveying is a big part of that, too, that Brian and I need to really start thinking about as we think about the RFP is, I know that we've talked about wanting to break out the larger piece of that parcel and along the riverbank for the, for the town to hold on to and then have the kind of, you know, four acres, four to five acres that the, the development is currently on, stay as one parcel. If we put out an RFP, we would want to break that apart so that, that can be part of the proposal. So that may be something that happens sooner rather than later. And then, again, if we had gotten money to do the access road, then we would be subdividing in a totally different way, because we would have a different kind of frontage. So we would be subdividing into four parcels instead of two. So I think for now, we would probably just break it into two parcels. One, the town would hold on to, and one that we would be putting out for a proposal for developers.
Okay. And, and the, the, the piece that the town would, would hold on to, would that piece be for recreational use or for whatever the determination is by the board and the...
I don't think it would be restricted to any one particular thing legally right now, but I think the, the intention would be for something like, you know, recreational use, you know, for preserving the, the river corridor. I think that, you know, things like having trails and, and access to nature would be the most likely use of that space. There's also that, the parking lot that's across the road from the mill. That might be something that we want to hold on to as, if, if there are public trails for the town to have public parking to access those trails. We might want to, you know, on the riverbank, there's kind of the, the shoulder of the road and there's so much hard, hardscape over there, all of the blacktop, it just is really expansive. So it can be kind of hard to imagine a clearly delineated curb cut there, but there would be a lot of space from the shoulder of a normal sized road to the riverbank where we could have trees planted, we could have green infrastructure, so like bio soils to keep pollution running off of the road and into the river. So there's a lot of space there that's currently taken up by just gravel and pavement that could become something later on.
Okay. So is there anything that, that the board needs to do tonight regarding this grant? Okay.
Tonight, we just wanted to make sure you were all aware and to celebrate this publicly.
Good job, Mariah.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. I, I would like, I, I know you have a lot to do, Mariah, but I would like to see, I, I would like that, that you get, what's do you, and, 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 that's not how I exactly wanted to say it, but just looking at, at all the grants that we've acquired. If you were not here, what would that be? And because you are here, we, we have an opportunity and we have grants that we would not otherwise have. And, and so I, I think the record needs to reflect that, because there may come a time when, when people, just in the normal course of, of special town meetings and annual town meetings and the question may be asked, you know, what has you done? Or what have you done? And, and I'm, I'm proud to say that, that without your assistance and without you being here, we probably wouldn't have half of what's there now. So you, you need to note that in some way so that, that if that information is needed, it's there.
I'll keep it in my back pocket.
Right. Okay, moving on. Let's see, what do we have? Discussion regarding POTW number one generator replacement.
So I tried to put a memorandum together that outlines our current understanding and where we are with this issue. I know that you took it under discussion last week as a, as a miscellaneous item, because it literally happened the day of the meeting, or the evening of the meeting. So let me pull that memorandum back up so that we can officially discuss it. And obviously, Pete is better versed on the details, so if I must speak, please correct me. So as we noted, we had a, an emergency situation the evening of Sunday, November 15th. Power was lost in Irving Side in several locations, including the plant. As a result, the emergency generator was used. And the emergency generator had a catastrophic failure. The, the motor seized and because of its age, it's a, it's approximately a 45-year-old piece of equipment. It doesn't have all of the, the modern safety protocols in place that a unit experiencing something like this may have shut down. So this one did not. It just kept running like a workhorse. So Pete called in our technicians that we have under contract to do our preventative maintenance, to just come and assess the damage and to see what can be done to salvage this equipment. And though they attempted some repairs, the end result was the, the unit is beyond repair in a manner that would, that would make sense for the cost. So it is our recommendation that we need to begin the process of procuring a new generator. I believe that our recommendation would be to stay with the brand Generac. We, that's what we have at all of our facilities. We treat it like a fleet in terms of procurement. So that would be our recommendation. Pete, last week discussed the needs of the plant requiring at least 155 KW capacity. That would replace what we currently have. And I believe it was Chairman Smith who, who asked us to think about that again. And this, and make sure that whatever capacity we're planning for includes the new office space that we proposed and the dry storage building. So after Pete did some reflection and talked to the technicians, the recommendation would be to secure a unit that's 200 KW to be sufficient. With that, Pete also did some research and it, it doesn't make sense to have a propane generator. We would need two units. There is no 200 KW unit that is propane fueled. It's, it would be diesel fueled still. The cost wouldn't make sense to go to two smaller propane units running in tandem.
Okay.
I believe that Pete has also spoken to DEP to discuss the situation, let them know where we're at. And they are not concerned with us having a diesel generator at that location because of the demand and the capacity needed for this, for this site. Did I articulate that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Excellent. So that brings me to, we don't have this in the budget. We think, we think that the replacement of this equipment could be at least $80,000. But if we're being realistic and, and conservative in our estimates, it could go as high as $100,000. You're talking about the equipment plus the pouring of a new pad, the electrical work that needs to be done, because the, the current unit is actually in the facility and we would be installing this new unit outside of the facility. So we have to make all of those adjustments. So, so we think it's somewhere in that range. Of course, we're going to have to go to town meeting for this. You, you do have sufficient funds in your retained earnings. You do not have that in the existing budget. So we could go to town meeting. The lead time on a unit like this is months, as we've experienced with the other projects. And so I would like your support to engage for COGS Chief Procurement Officer to begin this procurement process with us, to draft the documents for your approval and, and get that out to qualified service providers so that we could get an accurate cost. And I think, like you discussed last week for the sewer project, we would ask that these bids be good for 60 days so that we can, we can take that into consideration if you need to plan a special town meeting.
Okay. So the procurement through the for COGS is exactly 600?
It would not exceed 600. She's only going to bill us for the hours that she uses.
Okay.
So it'd be not to exceed $600.
And there's sufficient funding in the wastewater department operating budget for that expense?
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind authorizing me to engage for COGS for that, I would appreciate it.
Pete, can you, can you do that?
I believe I can. I'd like to make a motion to have the town administrator to engage for COGS procurement officer to conduct the procurement fee of not to exceed $600 for their generator replacement at POTW number one.
And the last of that motion was what, Brian, for you to be the...
But he, the beginning, he actually, he put it in at the, the beginning of the motion. It was to authorize the administrator to engage for COGS.
I second.
Thank you.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I will get that going this week.
Okay. Brian, is there anything else that we need to do with this going forward?
The next step will be hopefully, beginning of December, maybe, maybe the second meeting in, we'll have a draft procurement document for you all to approve and release so that we can start collecting those, those bid responses. Because of the value on this, we have to do the IFB process. So it's a little bit more detailed than the way that we advertise. And then my hope would be, I mean, we have all the holidays coming up, so I have to try to plan all your due dates around that. But I do expect that by the end of December, beginning of January, you should have your bid results. And then we should be able to, we should be able to move forward.
Okay. Have we, have yourself and, and the chair talked about a special town meeting date yet?
Not yet. And I, based on the conversation that you all had with the finance committee last week and tie-in bond on the sewer project, we know that that's one other potential need for for a special town meeting. So I would assume with the COVID-19 concerns, we're going to want to do all of this in one shot and not have multiple special time meetings. So I'm going to do my best to sort of create overlapping circles and see if I can find a, a date, an approximate date that would work to schedule this meeting so that we're not pushing the, the replacement of this generator too far for Pete. And at the same point, we have a, a chance to get those bid results in on the, on the sewer replacement for Irving Center. So that if that article needs to be on the agenda, we can take care of it as well.
Okay. Pete, anything you want to add to that?
Um, the only thing would be, the technicians were out the other day. Two, two more came out to kind of get an idea for some specs of what we're going to be needing. So I'll have that information for Brian hopefully shortly.
All right. Well, this, this is another one of those items that will stay on the agenda and till next Monday and will be updated as we move forward. Last on the, on the new business is review of town letterhead design.
More fun, huh?
So are we doing that or what?
It's filler text. You don't have to be able to read it.
Say, is this Latin?
So I've been working with Morgan on our letterhead designs and something came up, which was that our logo looked awesome when it was big, but as soon as you started using it for something smaller, it was really hard to read A Great Place to Live. And so I'm wondering the best path forward. I asked her to do, this is our third round of designs for the letterhead. And it's, the overall format is looking kind of what I think it should look like. Brian, can you zoom out?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, that's good. So the, the format, and feel free to tell me if you like it, don't like it, but is a banner at the top. So the, the format and feel free to tell me if you like it, don't like it, but is a banner at the top. I asked her to make it relatively light. The originals she sent over were. Dark enough that if we had printed out a bunch of them, it was gonna use a lot of ink. So it's an overall, a light look. Could you scroll down, Brian, to the next one? So this is the one that I'm working off of as kind of the one that I like best.
Is that, that's number two? Yeah, all right. Between the second one and the third one.
So the second one. Is, it has a watermark in the back for the, the town logo and at the bottom, it's just the contact information. But you can see, so I think, did I include one that doesn't have the, a great place to live, Brian? Can you?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yes, so. I'm asking, this is not gonna be the only use of a small logo that we're gonna have, because we're also gonna have business cards. My recommendation is that we have. The logo with the, a great place to live and one without, that we would use for smaller things like this. But I know that you already approved the other one, so I just wanted to come back and double check, is it okay? For the letterhead to not have that. She did change the logo a little bit when, if, when you scroll up and you look at that logo. She put it on two lines and she made it a little bit bolder and the font a little bit larger so that you can read it from a little bit farther away. And so that it's smaller. The ones that you had, the one that you had approved before, it had it all on one line and was very kind of thin and italics. But even if we use this, this bolder font on a business card, I don't think you're gonna be able to read it. So my request is, can we have one logo that doesn't have a great place to live on it? But we could still include that on our business cards if we wanted to. As, as kind of a separate, like she could put it at the bottom or include that phrase in some other way if we wanted it. It just wouldn't be. In the logo, which is gonna be, you know, super tiny.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I actually marked. All three of them up and, and kind of went with liking. Two and, and three. Didn't much like the other ones, the first one, because of the, it just seemed too busy with the logo, with the. The town crest down at the bottom of it, so. It is, I, I think what. Yeah, I don't have any problem with tool, tool and three and, and, and your suggestion. I. I, I don't know that I like the, the shading. On the background to the. To the emblem.
You wish it was a different color or darker or lighter or?
No, I, I think I'd probably prefer it to be white as opposed to. To just be the color of the sheet itself. It just, to me, it seems a little busy, but.
It'll, so when you, it looks a little bit strange. On a screen, but when you print it out, it shows up like a watermark, so it's very, it'll be very light and it won't be. It'll, it'll, it won't be, I think, as obtrusive as it is here. But I can definitely make sure that it's light enough that it doesn't look. You know, too busy so that you can actually read the text.
What do other people think?
I, I think it's a good idea to have two of them, like Mariah suggested. The, the watermark, that, that doesn't bother me that it's there. I mean, like Mariah said, obviously, it's gonna look a little bit different once it's printed out, so.
Bill, are you, can I just ask for clarity? Can I just ask for clarity? Are you suggesting that? Rather than including the town seal on the letterhead as a watermark or on the footer? You would like to see a version without the town seal on it?
No, I, you know, no, I'm happy with the seal. Actually, I was more talking about the, the, the heading where it says select board.
I thought about the, the, the town seal in the background.
Yeah, I also thought that.
No, I was talking about the, 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 the border. Being where it says select board and, and has our names listed. The, the shading just doesn't appeal to me. I don't know that it would look better just being plain white. It just seems like this is, that's why I said, it, it feels, to me, it feels like it's too busy.
I get it.
Yeah, so she originally sent over some designs that had a dark blue banner at the top. But like I said, it was gonna be really, if we printed those out, like it looked great on the screen. But printing them, it was gonna be a lot of ink, so I asked her to lighten it. But. And I think. I understand what you're saying, but I think if it was all white, it. It would all blend a little bit together too much. Do you know what I mean? Like it would be hard to kind of delineate. What the header is and what the actual text of the letter is. But I could ask her to fiddle around with it, maybe instead of having an outline to it, there isn't an outline to that banner and maybe that would make it look a little bit cleaner. So I can definitely ask her to, to fiddle around with it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing. I, I wouldn't mind seeing, well, this is just the face page anyways, right? The cover page, so it wouldn't be on any of the, the other pages. Pages two, three and four, if you're doing a document. Wouldn't have the same, wouldn't have the banner on, correct? So it's just the cover page. Yeah, I, I, I would like to see the. The banner with the border on it and, and what it would look like if it was just white inside. Other than that, I'm, I'm fine with your, your. Decision to go with two and three and the reasons for it.
So should we carry this? I, probably with Thanksgiving, one week is not enough for. Morgan, the, the designer to have a response, is it?
Well, those were, I mean, I really only intended to have the changes be the logo, so she, I think she already has pretty much everything finalized, so she might be able to do it quickly. We could potentially add it and then if we have to take it off, because I don't have anything.
So tentatively hold this for, for review next week?
If, if that's okay with everyone else.
Yes, that's fine.
And I did let her know that we're gonna be working on the business cards next and that we'd like to roll out all of the new branding for the new year, so. I don't know that we'll have the business cards ready to order by January one, but hopefully sometime in January, all of this will be. Finalized and we'll be able to. I'd like to present all of the boards and commissions and departments with kind of a package all at once to say. You know, here's all of the new materials. If you're choosing to use this, here's the branding guide, et cetera.
I'm fine and if you're. You have nothing else, we can. Move on with, with the rest of our select board meeting.
Thank you, Mariah.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Brian, do we have, is there anything else that we? I don't see anything else on the agenda that we need to cover. Is there anything else that you have for us?
I have no miscellaneous things that popped up this weekend or today, so, so I think you all are in good shape.
Okay, Pete, do you have anything you wanna? Add or do anything you wanna add to? Put on the agenda for next week or anything?
No, just what's gonna carry over. I mean.
Excellent.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn from the selectmen's meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen. Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good holiday, guys.
Yeah, you too. Don't eat too much. Yeah, I'm all set, Brian, so.
Have a great night.
All right, you too. Thank you.